The Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through a meeting pursuant to Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. We do have time reserved for a public comment for now, for anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for public comment for something that is not on the agenda? All right, moving forward, we have minutes for acceptance.
I would like to make a motion. We accept the minutes from equal third. I'll make a second.
Here in a first and a second. Discussion, corrections, anything else for?
I was tardy for the meeting, but I was in attendance.
Did I not list you, Mr. Russell?
Excuse me?
On the minutes? Did I not list you on the minutes?
Correct.
Okay, I'll add that.
Tricia, I respectfully ask that you check the spelling on my name, my first name. That's okay. Then I can take that off line afterwards.
And any other comments or corrections on those? All right, here are no further discussion. Calling a vote.
Demelli, aye.
Shigeri.
Dak, aye.
Hummuz, aye.
And the chair is aye. The minutes are accepted. Now, moving to, moving forward, we have our first public hearing of the evening for Paper Crane. Named, Paper Crane is the name of the organization. The person here for it is Bowie Bertold. The property is at 56 Gardner Road. Resumed to provisions of MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, the Hubbardston zoning bylaws, Article 22, the Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a public meeting. We are at the Slade Building, Southern Main Street, Hubbardston, to review the application for, and not technically renewal, but renewal, and we'll talk about that as we get into it, of a special permit of Bowie Bertold Paper Crane Provisions LLC with regards to 56 Gardner Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, for a commercial marijuana facility. So, the public hearing is in session. So, with that said, Mr. Bertold, or Representative?
Mr. McCarty.
Thank you.
Yep. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here with Bowie Bertold and Fitzgerald.
Thank you, folks. I'd also like to, I actually, we're out of seats. This is where I would normally invite our consultant to come to the table with us for.
I can scooch.
This, it works as it is.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have any chairs unless.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Chairs.
Chairs. Chairs. Chairs. Chairs. Chairs. Chairs.
Okay, you're fine there. That works for me. All right, I'm sorry, continue.
Thank you. No, good evening, everyone. So, thank you for having us in. Again, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf of Paper Crane Provisions. Bowie Bertold and Fitzgerald are here with me. And as the chair just read, we submitted on March 6th a special permit application for the property at 56 Gardner Road. Paper Crane Provisions was granted a special permit on May of 20, uh, May 20th of 2021. There was a, and that was recorded on June 14th of 2021. There's a provision in that special permit that allows them to ask for an extension. However, the town's bylaws don't have a clear path for an extension, so in discussions with Mr. Murray, we submitted essentially the same exact application that was submitted in 2021, and we've just made some notes on the pages as we go through it. Everyone should have a copy of that. So, our cover letter says just that. And then going through the application, we have the cover page and a table of contents, and then we get into the May 21. Um, well, actually, before that, we have an updated application form, an update of the Butters list, so notifications could go out to the current Butters. Um, and then we get into the original special permit application that was submitted February 26th of 2021. And so, the blue handwriting on that is my handwriting. Bowie and I went through this page by page to note any changes. And as you can see flipping through, there's very little other than the date, adding our company to it. In this document, there was reference to a number of employees, and in some spots it said six employees, and some spot it said eight employees. So, we've just crossed that out, and we've said sixty-eight employees, right? Because it fluctuates depending on what is going on at the site throughout the year. If it's planting, it's more intense. Harvesting, it's more intense. And so, there is a little variation in the employee count, so we put it as a window rather than two different numbers. We did attach four addendums to this that are at the end of the document. The first one is related to, um, the section under odors. There was a joint meeting in May of last year between this board and the Board of Health, where Bowie issued a letter to the board on how they addressed an odor issue that came up at that time. He's scheduled out his planting and harvesting to mitigate that odor issue. And to our knowledge, there hasn't been any complaints since, so we've attached a copy of the letter that he submitted back in May of last year to the board. The second addendum is relative to landscaping. The original special permit said that the intention was to transplant some apple trees from the rear of the property to the frontage of the property, which was their intention at the time. Prior, after the special permit was recorded, they consulted with an arborist who said that the trees are just not in a suitable condition to transplant. So, they didn't obviously transplant them because they wouldn't have survived. They do intend to do some landscaping at the front of the property. Our hope this evening is that we can get through the special permit, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting. We're hoping that the board votes to reissue the special permit, go through the appeal period, and then get that recorded, at which time we're hoping to bring forth plans to the board for additional work at the front of the property that would include parking improvements, landscaping improvements. You following on to join in, Bowie? You good? So, we're hoping to bring forth a new application after this one's complete that would include additional beautification at the front of the property. As I mentioned, the list of the Butters was updated. The third addendum that was submitted was relative to the language in the special permit that had to do with the host community agreement. Some of you may or may not know, the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, issued new guidance on how the host community agreements between marijuana facilities in town should be written, and what can be charged and what can't be charged. So, Bowie's in discussions with the town to make sure that their agreement is in compliance with that. And so, we just wanted to point that out. And, you know, I'm not an expert on the CCC, nor is, I don't think anybody on the board, to my knowledge. I think that's something that's better left to that regulatory authority than to the planning board. The fourth addendum was relative to water usage. They had projected at the time of filing the 2021 special permit that they were going to use about 5,000 gallons per day for irrigation. They monitored their usage over the past three years of operation and found that it's only really like 850 gallons. So, it's a significant decrease in consumption over what was projected. So, we pointed that out. Those are really the four things that we wanted to point out. And then I guess the last item that we'd like to discuss is, the original special permit had a three-year timeframe on it, which is why we're back here this evening. Ideally, that timeframe would go away if this board votes to issue a new special permit. The reason we're requesting that is, as you can imagine, as a business owner, you're investing significant money in the property, in equipment, in staff. And so, to make those considerable investments with a timeframe that could not go your way in three years is a, it's a big gamble, right? And it's an uncomfortable position for a business owner to be in. So, they prefer to see that timeframe go away. The other side of that is there are some lending institutions, now Gardner GFA being one of them, who will lend money to cannabis-related businesses. Eastern Bank is another. So, it's becoming, commercial lending is becoming more accessible for this type of business. And so, if you go to them and say, oh, I want to borrow X amount of dollars to buy this machine, but oh, by the way, my special permit could expire in three years, and I'm asking you for a five-year loan, that doesn't look very good to the bank, right? So, that's the concern with the timeframe that's proposed on the original special permit that we're asking to be removed. And I wasn't a part of the original special permit, but my guess is that it was new to town at the time, and a new business, and people didn't know how it was going to go. But I think Bowie's done a good job of being a responsible and good operator of his facility. And so, hopefully, that concern that might have been there in 2021 is no longer here. And so, I said to Bowie and Ed that we wanted to keep our presentation kind of really short and sweet tonight, is really we're asking to vote on the special permit as was issued in 2021 with those five items that we just discussed. And so, really, the meat of this document is just that, plus a copy of the recorded special permit at the end. So, I think with that, I'd be happy to have any discussion with the board. Excellent.
So, we have, we had a handup from our town administrator, who I believe was going to comment on the work with the applicant regarding to the community contact, uh, community host agreement. So, recognizing Mr. Boudreaux, our town administrator. We can't hear you, Nate.
Is he being loaded?
Uh, I think it's on our end because it's showing that he's talking, but there isn't sound coming out of the owl.
He was, he was. He was going in and out earlier.
He was going in and out earlier.
So, I believe the volume is down on the owl. Is there a button on the side if you're turning it up, or?
Maybe in the bottom there's a mute button, right?
How about now, Nate?
There's a mute button, there's a mute button, both on the little disc thing.
We can hear you now.
Yep, we hear you now.
Show them on.
Can you turn them up a little bit more?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that we are working with Mr. Bertold and Lisa, his business partner, and KP Law to figure out all of the HCA stuff. I should be able to talk with Nicole from KP Law either tomorrow during the day or Monday, in hopes of bringing the HCA issue to the Slade Board, and give the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Excellent, thank you. So, recognizing next, the planning board's consultant, Places' Associates, Mr. Murray.
Good evening. Just to backtrack on the methodology of the submittal, what we advise the applicant and through the board and your administrator is that we said, take the original application and modify it, and inform the board where the modifications are. Because the original discussion was to grant the board, request waivers from the board for the submittal documents. And I thought that was a very bad idea, because we want this renewal application to be completed, wants to address every single thing that you considered as part of the original application. So, that's why the application was submitted in the format that it was. So, you are not being requested to grant waivers to requirements, so you're not setting a precedent along those lines. And any applicant therefore is, you know, has the full burden of proof as though we're a brand-new permit. So, that's just the background as to the methodology that's been going on. I would like to advise the board that whatever the HCA agreement is, the host community agreement, it has nothing to do with this planning board. And I would simply recommend that the planning board make a permit condition simply saying that they shall comply with the requirements as established by the board of selectmen in the host community agreement. So, I would recommend that this planning board, don't go near it. The HCA is not your purview. We all know that it's something that the town has the right and responsibility, but it really isn't, the dollars and cents really aren't, isn't your responsibility to address as part of the special permit. So, we did find, by the way, the application was complete.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I'd like to take questions from the board next, and then open up a comment period for the general public.
I have several questions.
There's a, continue.
First of all, I wanted to say, thank you very much for preparing the material, because it really was a good job in terms of putting everything together. And I also want to thank Places and Associates for diligently looking into this here. My questions are more really to some of the details that we have here. I see that the addendum two, you did indicate that you are proposing to include a hedgerow of sugar maples and establish a 20,000-foot wildflower meadow. I'm assuming this is for this year, 2024? Or is that not the case? I just wanted to understand what your timeline is.
So, the roughly 20,000 square foot wildflower meadow has been established in the front. So, the, just the trees were a part of a larger planting for our second phase of the plant.
But what's the general timeline for that?
Well, considering that plant, that it's contingent on whenever that special permit were to go through, and then, you know, if we could do it, if, so it would be part of that plan, so we wouldn't be moving those trees to create what we want to create. If that doesn't go through, I'd be happy to plant some trees. If, you know, say that special permit wasn't granted, I would still beautify the front of the property.
Okay. It's just a general question, because I think people are interested in making sure that the appearance of this place maintains a character. And we noticed that you have tried to keep a very good perspective. And so, from my point of view, this is a certain enhancement, and would certainly be appreciated. Another question answered, do with the addendum number four, number four. I'm very happy and satisfied with your analysis with regards to the water consumption, because that was a very contentious issue a couple of years ago. And one that quite serious, is quite serious for your Butters, especially if they have concerns with regards to well drawdowns and so forth. I do remind that, everyone, that a couple of years ago, we did have a fairly severe drought. And so, as a consequence of that, there was some concern about this year. We've had some wet years since then, which is great, and I'm sure that it's great for you too. My first question is, is the average of 850, you say, and I quote here, it says, "Paper Crane has monitored the water consumption over the last few years of operation, and has found that the actual consumption is closer to $850, 850 gallons per day." I'm assuming that that is over the two-year period, right?
Sorry, that's, that's relative to during the season.
During the growing season.
Correct.
During.
Which is when you actually pour the water on these plants so that they continue to grow.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's when we're irrigating the field.
But this would have been over the two planting seasons that you had, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And then, um, and again, two years ago, we had, or maybe three years ago, when we were looking at the initial special permit, we had severe drought conditions. Would you consider that the 850 is now more sort of like what might be an average, even though this was a wet year? And that even if we have a drought year, or a much leaner year when it comes to humidity and moisture, that that number might not necessarily go all the way up to 4,000? Again, I'm asking you for your judge, you know, for your perception, based on the experiences that you have, and maybe even some technology that you have implemented, such as potential drip irrigation, or some other form of irrigation that reduces the amount of water consumption that you may therefore require from your wells.
Sure. So, we do use drip irrigation under organic plant-based bioplastic mulch. Our watering is very targeted to just our root zones. But just to take a look at last year, where we did have record precipitation, I believe, in June, July, and September, we were, I mean, I didn't, I hardly used my well at all. And so, you know, and like, I've also said, we're growing a lot of arid, sort of desert type of things that thrive on dry conditions. So, honestly, the drier the season, and the hotter, the, it's better, you know, it's, we don't necessarily need more water than the plants actually do well there. So, if that makes any sense, or even though it's dry, we're not going to be using, it will never go on, I think, go up to the 4,000 gallons a day. I mean, a 5,000, a 4,500 gallon watering will last, on a completely parched field, will last me, I mean, those, they'll be, plants will be really happy for five to seven days.
Very well.
So, when they're bone dry, yeah.
I'm satisfied with your answers. As I said, this was a very big issue a couple of years ago. And the fact that you are remarking on this here, and not only that, but you actually provide statistics, which I'm assuming might be verifiable if they were so required, satisfies me. Thanks, Chair.
Recognizing Mr. Murray to comment on the subject.
Just a point of order. Mr. Bertold didn't identify himself to the board.
Oh.
Good point there, yes.
Bowie Bertold, Paper Crane Provisions.
Thank you.
Nice to see everyone.
Sorry. We all know you.
Continuing with Mr. Murray, did you have any additional questions for the applicant?
No.
And did you have an opportunity to review this application?
I did.
And what is your general assessment of it?
It was complete and addresses virtually all the concerns that I'm aware that the town has with the project.
Excellent, thank you. Recognizing that this is a public hearing and calling time for public comment, because we have a little bit of a full room, and I actually expected it to be fuller, we're going to go with a slightly different approach. We have, I don't think we actually need to go with the lectern. I mean, we've got four public hearings, three scheduled for tonight. I was expecting a fuller house. So, with that said, let's go for a public comment. Please try to limit it to, let's say, three minutes, just because we have, we have a lot of hearings on our agenda tonight. So, calling for public comments. Is there any public comment? Right. Going once, going twice. Calling for additional comment from the board. All right, so just to elaborate on what the process here was, early on, the office, myself and Places Associates did work with the applicant, because our bylaws don't really have a renewal provision in them. Everything essentially runs forward as if it is a new application. So, we had reached out, essentially developed this method we had talked about, and I believe the process has gone consistent to what the board suggested was going to be accepted. So, I think we have a couple, I think we have one big question that's probably still out on the table for this, which is the timeline for the permit. I'd like to open that up to discussion from the board. Are we allowed to get rid of the timeline entirely, or is there something in our bylaws that requires it?
Mr. Murray, what's, what's your position on that?
Well, Mass General law requires that a special permit expire after a period of time. But a special permit also goes with the land. So, if the special permit has been exercised, so the timeline carried in Mass General law is for the applicant to initiate the activities described under the special permit. Once they do that, the special permit continues unless there's a termination clause, and it goes with the land until such time as either the activity stops, or, or you put a termination clause on it. The advantage for a termination clause, or a renewal clause, is you get to, so, as Mr. McCarty said, this was new to us. We didn't know how this was going to affect the community, and that was why this specifically had a termination renewal to revisit in front of this planning board, because we did not know its impact on the community. We didn't know a lot of things at that point in time. So, it's still a judgment column, the part of the planning board, as to whether you want, once you give up the termination clause, you give up a certain amount of oversight. And then, it's up to the building inspector and the Board of Health, or whoever else. It's not the planning board's responsibility, per se, to maintain and revisit this at any particular point in time. So, that's, that's the pro to a renewal, or maybe you need to change the bylaws, have a renewal as opposed to an expiration. Because frankly, the way it reads now, this is a new application. This is why they're doing what they've done. It's a new application. We're calling in a renewal, because that's what it is on the surface. But technically speaking, you'd be issuing a new special permit.
So, on our project list, taking a hard look at our special permit process, and our, our special promise, special permit process, and our special permit bylaws, is at the top of the list of things that we're currently asking for grant money in order to modernize, to look at that, and to also look at adding a formal site plan review process that's separate of the special permit. But I would suggest that those are not things that we've done yet. So, I wouldn't currently, I'm not currently considering that part of what I would look at, although everybody's welcome to have their own opinion on that. But it is certainly a place where we're out of line with best practices. What, in my mind, makes sense, what is, what are the orders of preference that the applicant's looking for? I understand that the top preference is going to be no time restriction.
Right.
What is the second line?
Well, I think before, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before I answer that, I think I'd like to kind of reiterate what Mr. Murray just pointed out. So, if the board doesn't have a timeframe, then the building inspector's other hat is zoning enforcement officer, right? So, if something's going on there that shouldn't be going on there, not that it would be, but if, in the instance that it was, then he, as zoning enforcement officer, would be the one that would go down there and issue a notice to Bowie to either correct what he's doing, or, you know, face whatever penalty at that time. Same as Board of Health would handle any other issues with that. So, although, by taking that away, this board would lose some policing ability, but you have other people in town that certainly you could reach out to the building inspector if you saw something and say, I don't like this, can you please go talk to him, in your role as zoning enforcement officer? So, in my opinion, I think you'd still be covered as a town, maybe not as a board. And I don't know many planning boards in all the communities that we work in that want to get into the policing side of things, right? Their job is to review the project, review the engineering, and issue appropriate conditions for that project, so then it can go off and do its thing and be enforced where it should be enforced. That's my two cents, based on all the, you know, I don't know, dozens and dozens of communities that we worked in in the state. If you wanted to see a timeframe, you know, I would, one of my other hats that I wear is I have 13 lending institutions in the area, that I'm their construction expert. So, when they're going to grant a commercial loan, they send me the documents, the plans, the approvals, the budget, and they ask me to review it. And so, I'm very aware of what the banking policies are. If it's anything less than five years, then I think that would seriously hinder Bowie's ability to obtain financing through a commercial institution. I think that would be the bare minimum. And I, and we didn't have this discussion, and so, if he's grimacing with me saying five years, I apologize, because we didn't speak about that. But I think that would really be like the minimum that wouldn't cripple his ability for funding, which, to grow a business, we all know, no matter what type of business it is, you need funding, right? To add employees, to add equipment, to do improvements to the building and to the property, you need a source of money. And so, you can go get private money, which is what many of the cannabis companies in the Commonwealth do, but that comes at a cost premium, right? So, you're paying higher interest, because it's not a secured loan that you're getting from a bank. So, I guess that's my long-winded response to, the preference would be obviously to see it go away, and let the zoning enforcement officer or the Board of Health worry about the enforcement and policing of it. But I think the shortest we would like to see would be five years.
So, and, I'm, of course, the board will certainly speak for themselves on this, but one of the things historically that we've struggled with as a community is having a building inspector. We currently have one. That is excellent.
Mm-hmm.
But because of some mistakes in the past, and an unfortunate intermunicipal agreement, we went through a period of years where we ultimately did not have a building commissioner, which created a litany of issues for the community.
Yeah, I'm sure. You're not alone in that. There's several other communities that they seem, there seems to be a lot of turnover in that position.
So, and I guess what, and this is speaking as an individual and not as, as the chair. I certainly hear your arguments. I'm very sympathetic to them, because being able to transition a commercial lending is absolutely huge. The reservation that I think I need to overcome, and I think the rest of the board is going to overcome, is really our own mystery. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to discussion.
I personally would be willing to remove the timeframe based on the completeness of the applicant. I personally would be willing to remove the timeframe based on the completeness of the application, the fact that we had no concerns and no public comment or concerns. I would be willing to for this permit, we have the timeframe, again, personally.
And I agree with the opinion on it, I don't think it's fair that we could hold him hostage for a three-year period. And then he doesn't know if he's gonna be here after that time, I don't think that's right. I think we're supposed to be here to protect the town and everybody end up, 'cause we had had issues before with the orders, and that was quite a concern by quite a few people, but I believe you addressed that. My concern? If ownership of the company changes, so we go down a different road, that would be my concern. Is there anything we can build in? If we're gonna review our procedures and policies, can we build something in to protect us more? I don't wanna hinder you in any way, but I wanna have it so that, if we don't have a building inspector, can the Board of Health stop operation till we can actually maybe get it back to our board? I don't wanna just leave it all, all the way open, but I wanna give him the opportunity to get the financing he needs to get, 'cause I don't think it's fair for our town and our board to say it's a business loan and you can only operate for this length of time, and then we might close you after that. I, I don't think that's right either, so I don't know how to fix that. So.
Mr. Russell?
You know, as an ex-banker, I agree with Mr. McCarty's point and, and what's been talked around the table here about limiting any business based on a timetable with a special permit. As a lender, I would be in favor, or hopefully there'd be no, no termination date on this permit. Five years even, three years from now, he might need a five-year loan.
Right.
It's gonna, it'll continuously become a problem. So any, any, any expiration date on, on a special permit will be problematic to a potential lender. As Mr. Murray stated earlier, I think a special permit is intended to allow an applicant or a recipient of a special permit to initiate its operations within that initial period of time, and then to continue operations under whatever restrictions and regulations that we put into the special permit, and enforcement by, by a zoning enforcement officer or building permit would be the right policing authority. I appreciate what you're saying, Chris, about vacancy in that area at times, but, you know, that vacancy is something that the town's gonna have to address from a different perspective as compared to tying up not just this applicant, but any other potential special permit applicant. Wanna encourage business in this town, and not restrict it.
Further comment from the board?
From my perspective, what I'd like to say is, is I think that, Paper Crane provisions had some issues at the very beginning, they've addressed them, and I think that's very positive. Not only with regards to the odor, obviously the water. You're actually coming here with, again, very willingly to present this special permit. I tend to agree that we should not assume a role that is truly not one that we as a board need to undertake. And if anything, if there is an entity that this town does not have, that is responsible for monitoring, policing, and enforcing the actions, and if that is not available in the town, that, that is really the responsibility of the town administrator, the select board, to make sure that the right individuals are hired so that we can make sure that we have the right entities inside of this, i- i- inside of the town, within the town, in order to be able to do and carry out such enforcements. I mean, I do believe that if there were some substantial changes there, you were to build something, if you were to put, like you did in the past, come to us because you wanted to put some additional equipment or a, a new facility and things of that nature, will require a special permit, you definitely can come back and you can make a request for that. So from my perspective, I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact of what our role is and what our responsibility is as a board, and not overextend ourselves, because we can potentially put a five-year limit and therefore hinder a business, so that's my personal opinion on that.
I'm just gonna go to Mr. Bedrow, and then we're gonna go to Places Associates, recognizing Nate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I understand this hypothetical, I would like to point out that at the very least, for this town administrator and hopefully for the select board that I work for, in the event that such vacancy were to take place, it would be a top-tier priority to ensure that we get back a building commissioner, either by working with another community, hiring a vendor, or bringing someone on in the interim. So as I say that I can't speak for the future forever and ever and ever, but that would be a top-tier priority that would be solved in short order, so I wouldn't go into too great worry about the, a long-term vacancy in the position of building commissioner.
Thank you, recognizing Places Associates.
So just two kinda contradicting points. When you issue your special permit, you're allowed to issue conditions of the special permit, and special permit goes with the land. So it goes with any inheritor of the project, they have the same requirements, and when they violate the special permit conditions, that's when the building inspector or the Board of Health or any other enforcement agency in the town can step in and, and cease and desist or do whatever's appropriate. So that, that just goes to a lot of the conversation you're having. On the other side is, there's more than one marijuana curvay, or I don't know the proper word, grower in town, and technically speaking, as the lawyers say to me, each special permit stands on its own merits, but I'm telling you, you're setting a precedent. So just please keep that in mind.
Alright, so thinking about where that leaves us from a procedural standpoint, so, it, it sounds like we have a reasonable consensus on the board. I'll, I will take public comments, Mr. Robinson?
Will you?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Two comments, or three comments. One, if you read the purpose of the planning board.
Yes, identify yourself in the record.
Identify yourself in the record, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Tom Robinson, by Brigham Street, Hubbard Street. If you read the purpose of the planning board, it is to protect, that word protect is in there. It's your objective to protect, and so to say that someone else is gonna protect the town kind of turns your back on the mission of the, of the planning board. Second thing is, I don't believe, my personal opinion is, no permit should be a perpetual permit. A special permit is, is a special permit, it's not a routine thing you're handing out. Shouldn't be perpetual, you should retain some review. He's here tonight, I don't think he's suffered from this process, but on the other hand, the town didn't suffer either, you protected it. So I, I think this process, every applicant that comes here should have a well-prepared application. You don't get extra points for that, that's what you need. And so I don't see this process as arduous or painful. It, it is a good check on things being done the way they should be done. I would, I could live with five years, I think that's what was the, the reason he's here tonight, right? Five years?
No, through the chair. The original special permit issued in 2021 had a three-year timeframe.
Three, okay.
And in that document, it said that we could request an extension, however, the town's bylaws don't actually provide for that extension to be acted on by the board. And so we've submitted a new application, which is really the 2021 application with a newer butters list and a new application and a new check.
Guys, well, I thought it was five years, but it was three.
It was three. And, and if I may elaborate, Mr. Chair, it's not this process that's the hindrance. It's the, the limitation of the, the right to operate is the hindrance.
Well.
This, we, these, these are all fine people, and, you know, they all do a great job volunteering their time, and Mr. Murray does a great job as their consultant, and we, we enjoy coming and presenting to this board. This process is, is perfectly fine and, and normal process for a, a town to review a project. Over typically special, special permits, as Mr. Murray pointed out, the board goes through the process of reviewing them, they issue them, and you have two years to activate that, and then it goes on. And so the timeframe is the, the concern for us.
Very nice, and you had a third point?
Well, like I say, I could, I could live with five years, that's a good idea. And to the issue of precedent, we have two more hearings tonight, and woven through those hearings are numerous special permits. And I think you need to put time limits on all such things. A special permit is special, it's not a routine thing. I would recommend in this case five years, but maybe in other cases, if you have an event and you get a liquor license, it only has twenty-four hours maybe.
Okay, well, thank you for the comment. And I'm going to do another final call for public comments on this. I don't wanna keep rehashing public comment, because we did have a call for public comment, and there was no public comment at that time. So I just wanna make it completely clear, this is the last time I'm calling for public comment on this matter, so speak now. Recognizing in the back corner over there, name for the record?
Hi, Kathy Hansgate, 143 Williamsville Road. I think that I agree with the previous speaker, that the planning board's goal and purpose is to protect the town, so special permits should have some sort of time limit. I also agree with the applicant in that three years is too short for business. So I ask that you put a time limit on that is reasonable for the kind of business he's in. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So, Mr. Murray, did you have an additional comment?
I really don't.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we, yeah, additional comment from the board, although I think we already have a general consensus from the board, so.
The only question I have now, after hearing a couple of these comments, should we get an opinion from town council on setting a precedent here? Do you feel comfortable, you know, ready for that, or?
I don't, my personal feeling is we don't need an opinion from town council on setting a precedent here. Because to, to the point from our consultant, Mr. Murray, is each special permit does stand on its own, because it is supposed to be unique, although there is some precedent to it, but once again, that only really becomes an argument if you're going much further down the road and you're talking about litigation anyways. So you're already on a very different track at that point. So I think, well, I, we're, we need to come out of this conversation with the data point, because we ultimately need to be able to talk to the applicant and to Mr. Murray and say, hey, we need a draft of what we're gonna be signing here. So Mr. Murray is gonna need some instructions from the board on this.
I'd like to make one additional point, and this is in regards to what has just been discussed. Special permit by itself is a big process that not every applicant that comes in front of this board has to go through. And it's, it's called a special permit for the very specific reason that there's some special circumstances that need to be reviewed and oftentimes have, are much more impactful on the community where we live. We've actually had the very good advantage of not only having three years of working with this particular applicant. And we had reviews of issues that were raised, we also had very specific mechanisms by which these items were not only presented, but were also resolved, so there's a goodwill element that comes along with this here. The other thing to consider here is, is that we as a town need to really think about what the planning board's role and responsibilities are. The planning board has a review process that is very, very strict, and one that we have, at least in the five years that I've been here, institutionalized to the point where we have a very, very good mechanism in place for the review with an individual who comes to us with, with his, with his institutional perspective. The fact that, is that we, we're, we're not policemen here. We, we are here to look at things from the very beginning, understand what are the circumstances that need to be resolved, potential issues that need to come with front of the community, and if Mr. Berthol or Paper Crane comes to us in the future with some changes that are substantial, that require us to re-review the special permit, at that point in time, they should be reopened. The circumstances by which we had previous engagements with Mr. Berthol really had to do with issues that were actually presented as part of the initial permit, and they still remain. And so I don't think that we are putting any lesser boundaries on the special permit this time around that we had previously. And should those circumstances be problematic again, or should, should there be an issue that are mechanisms by which they can actually be policed, as has been, as has been stated? We have a building inspector, we have the health department, and we have mechanisms by which these entities can review it. We also don't wanna hamstring our businesses by simply being able to say that at any point in time, can you, can we take you back into, into, into a, into, into the planning board for any reason that we don't like? We need to adhere to what the special permit was in there, what was presented, and how it is that the, this particular entity is, is working when it comes to the parameters or the, the guardrails that were actually set by this special permit. Having said that, I, I certainly, I'm certainly then open to the debate, but I really think we need to understand what the purpose is of this planning board, and what the purpose is of this bylaw, and what the purposes are when it comes to, very specifically, regarding to what the special, the purpose of the special permit is. And that's what we are here to do. Thank you.
Alright, additional comment from the board? Okay, so we're currently still in the public hearing, we've not closed the public hearing. So Mr. Murray, let's, let's talk a little bit about process here.
You probably are not under any time constraint to close the hearing if you think that you're going to get any significant information that might change your perspective or mind. But if you're comfortable where you are, then you can close the public hearing tonight, and with your permission, I would work with the applicant to draft a new special permit, which we would present to you at another regularly scheduled meeting. Just remember, no new information can be presented to you, you can't consider new information after you close the public hearing, unless you then have to re-advertise and re-notify and do all that kinda stuff. So there is no penalty, by the way, to you, and I'll let the applicant speak for themselves, to keep the public hearing open, if that's a concern, I don't really see it as a concern. So my recommendation, having heard everything that's, that's gone on, is you close the public hearing and authorize my office to work with the applicant to draft a special permit, which we will jointly take back to you for your consideration.
Right, and reminding the board that the consequence of that decision would be, we would start the ninety-day clock on, on that decision being finalized, because when the public hearing's closed, it starts a shot clock, so. Which if we violate, it's an automatic grant. So with that said, I'd like to open discussion of that specific point on the board, on how the board would like to proceed.
I would be open to closing the public hearing, none of us had anything for them to bring back to us, I don't see any reason to keep it open.
Thank you.
I agree.
Do you want, through the chair, do you want to give me guidance on the one sticking point? Because you really haven't done a straw poll, nor have you taken a vote on the timeline of the special permit.
I think we should. Yeah, let's, let's provide some guidance and do a straw poll on that. I guess in, in terms of, well, let's, let's run around the table, I guess. I am reluctant to go without a time limit, although I completely understand going without the time limit, although I also realize that it might just be me personally having trouble letting it go, so. So I would, I would maybe start it at ten. The, the, of ten years would be reasonable, but just start with the special.
Here's my concern, in the last five-year period, if we effectively cut them off from getting a loan. That's why I don't see a timeframe as working, because for the first five years, it's great. The second five years, we've cut them off completely.
I tend to agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
And again, I think we have, we have sufficient mechanisms in place to, A, monitor, B, provide feedback, and bring it in front of the town with the other enforcing units. That's not the role that we as a planning board have.
Yep. So.
Just need to get away from trying to control everything that cannot be controlled by the planning board.
So that sounds like a straw poll, five-one on no time limit.
Got it.
Excellent. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I make.
Oh, go ahead, Phil. I make the motion that we close this public hearing.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Calling a vote, and the associate member is in play for this vote.
Mr. Murray, aye?
Demalia, aye.
Jack, aye.
Holman, aye?
Russell, aye.
The public hearing is closed for this matter. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming.
Nice to see you.
Chair, do you vote on that?
Oh, and the chair is aye. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving, moving down the list, and we're actually gonna go a little bit out of order. And we're gonna go under matters, not reasonably anticipated by chair. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
So this, this is in regards to how we are going to look at co-location applications. So we had a co-location application come into us from a group representing Verizon. And they made the assertion to us that under federal law, that, that our bylaw article is inapplicable. And that argument is based upon the Spectrum Act. And when they did that, the office reached back out to them and said, well, you, you can't just tell us that, you need to prove up, and then we need to run that by town council. So the board updated, updated town council, updated the town administrator, and we actually have a representative from the firm on the line with us. So we had posed the question to town council, and we had, we had sent over the legal memo provided by the applicant. And what was produced to town council is the decision that was published to, to everyone in the meeting. So before I go to general discussion on this, I'd like to ask Mr. Murray as our consultant
Just on the backside, if you can, last tab.
To share his thoughts on this. And what we believe the options are here. And then we'll have the representative from the applicant speak, if he has anything to add.
Okay, so I'm just gonna restate what I previously sent in an email. I believe that you have really two basic, you have many options, but the two basic apparent ones are based upon a review from the memo from town council and what the applicant submitted, and a review of the original Vertex special permit. I want to remind the board that during those public hearings, Vertex told the board that they would be seeking co-location. And the board acknowledged that when granting the special permit. So to keep this short, which is hard for me, I personally and professionally think that you can make a determination that this is a minor change because it is something you anticipated. It's something Vertex said was going to happen. And that's based upon town council review and my review. If however, the planning board is concerned that you need public input, you have the option to take this to a public meeting, not a hearing, but a public meeting, and ask the applicant to advertise and notify the abutters. You can hold a public meeting, receive input, and then make whatever determination you want after you receive the input. But I do not believe that's a requirement.
I, I would suggest one, one clarification to that, the final sentence on the, on the determination. The legal standard here suggests that we have no legal authority to say no to it. So in terms of making a determination, we're not actually able to. This gets granted automatically within sixty days of filing because of the Spectrum Act. And just to quote the language for the benefit of the public, section sixty-four oh-nine A of the Spectrum Act codifies forty-seven USC fourteen fifty-five A, that provides that a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimension of such tower or base station. And there's regulatory guidance that suggests that a substantial change is ten percent or more. We agree, and, and this is town council's read on it at this point, quoting town council. We agree that the applicant has in its application accurately stated how FCC defines eligible facilities request being any request for modification of an existing tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station involving the co-location of transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, or replacement of transmission equipment. And then here is, here is the key opinion from town council. It is our opinion that the applicant's proposal is an eligible facilities request because it is proposing co-location at the facility. And I, town council's opinion goes on to talk about satisfying the individual elements in order to be a eligible facility. So there really isn't any withholding here. We, we have no authority to deny it. So any, any public meeting or public hearing on it would really just be an exercise in futility. It would certainly give people the opportunity to be heard. But there's literally nothing that could be said at it that would make us legally able to deny the application, is essentially what I got at a reading town council.
Unless, unless there's a substantial change.
Unless there's a substantial change.
There is.
There is. Now, we look, now, what would be the point of allowing a tower and not allowing carriers?
That's our only.
And I believe this is for the good of the town, and for the townspeople also.
So can I just ask the very basic question? You reviewed, you reviewed the complication.
Yes.
There is no substantial change, meaning ten percent, over ten percent to the tower height?
Correct.
To the dimension of the footprint?
Correct.
And there's no additional passages that have to happen from the road into this property, or any conduits that have to be included, incorporated? There's nothing that is going to be created, developed, put in a location outside of that footprint that you're aware of, based on this?
That's perfectly legit, all of those things.
So for all intents and purposes, it really does comply with what it's been.
It absolutely does comply.
Thank you.
So what, what I'm looking for from the board here is, I think we need a motion that this is a qualifying facility, and to refer it to the building commissioner for further handling.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, hearing a first and a second, any additional discussion? Bill, does, does the board get that motion, is that sufficient?
Well, I don't know if the building inspector knows what a qualifying facility is. I've, I've been encouraging you to deter, to determine it's a minor engineering change.
Would you take a friendly amendment to that motion?
I will.
And I would like to recommend that the board authorize the chairman to endorse a letter because the letter should be copied to the applicant, should be copied to Vertex, should be copied to the building inspector, commissioner, the town clerk, and the town administrator.
Friendly amendment to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. So with a friendly amendment to that effect, any further discussion? All right, calling a vote?
Mr. Murray, aye?
Demalia, aye.
Jack, aye.
Holman, aye?
Russell, aye.
And Monroe, aye. We'll need to look and see if Peter actually has a vote on that one, but record it as a vote.
I will, I will record it as a vote.
I mean, it doesn't matter because it's unanimous. All right, thank you, everyone. So going a little bit further out of order, just because we have somebody else who's waiting here. I would like to come back to the bylaws and go to, where was it?
Administrative matters?
Yep, administrative matters. Matt Waterman, or sign off for Land Tech.
Good evening, Matt Waterman with Land Tech Consultants, here on behalf of Thirty-Six Gardener Road LLC, who's the owner and operator of the Storage Solutions facility that was recently constructed within the last year, maybe plus. We're here tonight getting, looking for a final approval from the board. I do have copies of the plans, reduced size, if anyone wants to see them, and some other good documentation for your reading pleasure. The storage facility was purchased by Storage Solutions back in April of two thousand twenty-one. This board approved site plan approval just before that in February of twenty twenty-one. We didn't, or weren't included as far as the site plan approvals, but we came with the owners. We've done several of these facilities with them around the state, the closest one being Sterling. And when we came up where there was more construction management survey, finalized builds, drainage certifications, and the, and the construction period part of the project. Initially, when they first bought the property, they did come in with a minor modification. I don't know if the board was, who was on the board at that time. And it wasn't moving any of the buildings, enlarging the facility, or doing any drainage changes. It was just getting a determination of all the slab elevations. There wasn't a good indication on that, on the approved plans. And so we had come in just to kind of establish the grading for the site. But, and, and the board approved that. And, and construction commenced shortly thereafter, and, and it was most of twenty twenty-two and into the early part of twenty twenty-three. We submitted a plan back in July of twenty twenty-three. I know there was a punch list that was generated by places, and Mr. Murray included cleaning out the detention basin, replanting some of the landscaping that had died. Those items were completed last fall, going into late, almost early December. And then we've been kind of waiting on a determination and requesting our final sign off. We're here tonight, I, I think we've met all the conditions of the permit. We did go through the permit. There was just three special conditions at the end of the, of the, of the board's decision, which were more operational and logistical type conditions, one being that no vehicle storage would be allowed at the facility and should be included in the lease. The second is that a dumpster shall be constructed and last, and thirdly, no hazardous waste, storage of hazardous waste in the facility, and that that should be included in the lease. I did bring a copy of their lease, which I didn't get to hand out ahead of time, so I apologize. But if you want to take a quick look, it's on pages two and four, they're highlighted. And it does include both of those requirements that were specific to the lease on page two, which is double-sided, back of page one. It does have no vehicle storages allowed. And then if you turn it back to the page, the second page, which is page number four, item number seven, there's, there's a hole, and it goes on to the next page of all the hazardous materials, and, and that you can't have hazardous materials. And so this was sent to me by the, the property owners, Storage Solutions, this afternoon. So hopefully that addresses any concerns with that. The other issue with the dumpster, we do have a dumpster pad. We do not have a dumpster, though. We don't, they, they don't use a dumpster. The, I don't know if you've seen the facility, it's, it's, it's operated with a kiosk, it's unmanned. So when, if you want to rent a facility, you can do it all automated, it's pretty impressive, actually. But there, there is a maintenance person, they come from the Sterling facility, actually, no, they come from the Leominster facility. He'll go, he'll check, they don't generate any trash, there's no office. Typically, it's just picking up trash from people that have left stuff. And so he goes around and picks up trash and takes it with him back to Leominster. But if the board wants a dumpster, we could certainly put in a dumpster. But we do have the pad, we just haven't placed a dumpster on the pad. It's just, at this point, it's, it's nothing that's needed. But we're here tonight asking for final sign off. They do have a construction loan that they've been holding on. They're operating on a temporary occupancy, and they would like to close that temporary occupancy, get a permanent occupancy, and close out their loan, and any of the, the interest payments that go with that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Murray, do you have any questions or comments?
So we're happy with the condition of the site, and they did follow through on their punch list. I spoke with Mr. Waterman, I think earlier this week or late last week, and said the only outstanding items that I didn't have information on were the special conditions. And most importantly, the hazardous waste and the no vehicles, because it's not a sprinkled facility. We don't want anything that's vulnerable inside the facility. I completely understand why they don't want a dumpster because somebody will empty a unit out and install it in the dumpster. So that, I defer that to the board. But we are comfortable with the board signing off on this. There are two ways that I recommend you do it. You can either write a letter to the building commissioner and the applicant, or you can take your vote, and when you finalize your meeting minutes, that can be forwarded to the applicant and the building commissioner. You don't necessarily need to write a letter, it's up to the board.
Does the applicant have a preference?
Uh, no, a, a letter would be ideal, but we would take acceptance of minutes. Or an email, or something that just acknowledges that it's been accepted.
Okay, well, let's do a vote and endeavor to get a letter out. So the language on, on that motion. Mr. Murray, can you suggest what that language would be again, and then would somebody like to make it?
I would suggest that a member of the board move to acknowledge the completion of the site, the, the project as approved by the site plan in compliance with the site plan conditions. And such a letter would be endorsed by the chairman of the planning board on behalf of the board, and a copy forwarded to the town clerk, building commissioner, and the applicant.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Hearing the first and a second, any further discussion?
I have some questions, if I may.
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. This actually is to Mr. Murray. Can you explain to me the removal of the silt that has accumulated within the detention basins? I understand it has been remediated.
Yeah.
What was the main cause? And how does the remediation work mitigate this so that it would not happen in the future? Because I know that this was a big concern, and you had raised this in the past. I just want to make sure that this is not something that, we fixed it now, but it's a plug, or it's something that is just going to happen again, potentially in the future?
Well, I can't guarantee that it won't happen again in the future.
I'm not asking you to guarantee it, I'm just trying to.
But the problem that they had is this thing took forever to build. And it was unstableized, the disturbed soils were unstableized through the winter and the spring of last year.
Okay.
And so there was no grass growing, there's nothing holding the dirt. So whenever they had a storm, it flushed into the basin at being the localized low point. When we pointed that out, they got to it actually very quickly. And I think that they've reasonably stabilized the soil surfaces enough that that should not be an ongoing problem. If we have torrential rains, some of, some siltation will have to happen, but they have a stormwater management plan, and they're obligated under that to. and they're obligated under that to clean it out on a regular basis.
Would this be something under the purview of the building inspector if that were to happen?
It could be.
Okay.
More likely, uh, the highway department would get upset that it drains onto their roads and it's causing them a problem, and that would, would, would probably instigate it.
So again, we have a mechanism by which that can be a checked and monitored and feedback provided to the, uh, owner.
Right.
Uh, another quick question. Uh, s- on that page where, uh, the term hazardous substances are defined, it says here, any substances defined under hazard, hazardous substances under CERCLA.
I can't. Phil, do you know what CERCLA is? I, uh...
I'd like to be able to...
I think we'll have to Google that.
Okay, I'll Google it afterwards. I, I, if it was something...
It, it is a, uh, it is...
Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act.
Okay, so we could follow up on that.
It's kind of super clean.
Okay, very good. And so, uh, anything that is termed hazardous under the CERCLA would be therefore prohibited.
Which is a monstrous list.
Monstrous list.
It would be bigger than this.
And then, and then it says petroleum and petroleum products. Does that include Vaseline? I'm being, I'm being facetious here because Vaseline technically is a petroleum product.
Yes, but usually they say it, uh, stored in a quantity greater than normal household use.
There you go. All right. I'm trying to make it lighthearted here.
Who seconded? I'm so sorry, I missed it. Who seconded the motion? Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry.
All right. Any, any further discussion on that? All right, so this is, uh, this is closing on special permit, so it isn't that or...
No, just site plan.
Oh, this was just a, this wasn't a special permit?
No.
Oh, so then I guess associate member is not in play on this one.
Right, just like...
Yep, correct.
So calling a vote.
Mr. Murray, aye.
Demilia, aye.
Dak, aye.
Holman's aye.
And the chair is aye.
Thank you very much, and we can wait for the letter till after Legoland if you want.
Thank you. The town offices are closed tomorrow anyways.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it.
All right.
Yes.
Oops, may grace his hands. Get ahead.
Recognizing, uh, the town administrator.
Mr. Chair, can I make an unsolicited suggestion?
Yeah.
I'm thinking that since there, we do plan on having the other two public hearings in, as your next meeting on May first, and since there are no members of the general public, neither in person nor online, maybe you consider tabling those two, and I will work with land use clerk to advertise the public hearings to the general public in a greater manner so that there may be public in attendance on the first during the second round of the public hearing.
Okay, uh, I do think I have three or four people here to comment on them, though, so, um, I'm sorry. I, I agree with the idea that we should, uh, we should table the formal public hearing on the bylaws, but I also think we should take public comment from everybody who came out.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
I agree.
All right.
I agree.
Um, but did you want to address number six?
Number six? Oh, let's, um...
We can do this afterwards because the public, the public hearing is...
Yeah, we're in order. Let's, let's stay in order.
So it's not going to be a public hearing? It's just a new public comment? How do you want me to write about this?
Uh, so...
We can open the public hearing and continue it, not continue it.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess we can open the public hearing. Well, if we continue the public hearing, then don't we have to advertise that public hearing to continue it to the next one?
No, no. If you've been duly advertised, you can open and, and take no testimony, testimony, and extend it to a time and date, place certain.
Okay. So let's, let's do, yeah, let's, we'll open them. We'll, we'll take public comments from anyone who's here, just to get me to the next one. Uh, a short discussion about where we're at with it, and then move into the next items.
You know, open one and then continue it, or open both?
Uh... Now you have to do them separately.
Yeah, I do them separately. All right. So going in order here, so, um, calling to order the, uh, the public hearing on the proposed agricultural accessory use bylaw, Article twenty-five, drafted by the, uh, the planning board. Um, so as was previously stated, we're actually going to be holding another public hearing for this in order to be absolutely sure we're fulfilling our obligations under the rules and clear the attorney general. Uh, but with that said, uh, for the benefit of the public, uh, what we have here is a project that's literally been going on for years, and at this point is now involved the work of dozens of people and had very substantial public comment. Uh, and it started, it started with the RBC and started with the, uh, the planning board, went into a formal committee, was then subject to some DLTA consulting work by MRPC, uh, and now we're at a point where we're trying to get this on to our upcoming town meeting. So, uh, I'm going to give a much more thorough discussion when we do the next public hearing on this. Uh, but, uh, but at this point, uh, let's, let's kick off some public comment on this one. Um, the, the version that's currently out is, um, is the one that we have worked on as a board ourselves and had worked with a consultant and is the product of the public meetings that we had. So, uh, does anybody on the board have any comment, and then I'll go to the room for the public? All right, uh, moving on to the public for, for comment. Yep, recognizing.
Hi, Kathy Hansgate from one forty-three Wayansville Road, Lady Book Farm. Um, I, I find some typos, if you can get those corrected before. Um, in section two, twenty-five point three definitions, uh, under number four, you have keeping horses as commercial enterprise. And I assume you're still re- um, five, six, and seven should be A, B, and C, because I assume that that's still in regards to the horse operation? That's what it looks like to me?
What was the number again?
Twenty-five, three, twenty-five dot three definitions.
Under definitions, item four is keeping of courses, and then five, six, and seven looks like it should be A, B, and C of the horse farming operation. Is that correct?
Yeah, four, five, six, it's under change, A, B, and C, under four, and I agree.
Is that how you want that worded?
Oh, maybe.
Or is she talking about something else?
Mr. Murray, do you have a copy of the meeting?
I need it.
The colon wouldn't imply that we're expecting something below it, but we don't know if five, six, and seven...
Do you see the colon? It's, it's, it should be for A, B, and C, or whatever it...
If five, six, and seven are separate, then it shouldn't be a colon.
Okay, let's remove the colon, and those are separate.
And just make it a semicolon, or?
Nothing.
Should it be period?
The previous ones have a semicolon on them, so I think we want to use a semicolon to be consistent.
Of items then, that's correct.
I think that these farming operations may include, so I think that would be, these farming would be five, and then five, six, and seven would be A, B, and C.
Exactly, so this should be, five, five, six, and seven should be A, B, and C, or?
As a subset of these farming operations, yeah.
And that's all under horses, correct? Because that's what you gotta written under.
No, no, but...
Then then four should be...
Four is the keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise, period.
Period.
New paragraph, number five, these farming operations may include the following, operation mark agricultural support, because it is...
Right. So four, four is simply keeping of horses as a commercial op- enterprise, period.
Correct.
Five is, these farming operations may include the following as primary or incidental uses.
Yeah, I think the word these should be struck.
And then it should be A, B, and C instead of five, six, and, or whatever it's listed as.
I think the word these should be struck. Farming operations may include. Because these implies it's a subset of something, and it's not...
Right. Thank you. Because it's very confusing as it is. Okay?
Yeah.
Um, then we go down to D, farm, and it's section A, it's in red on my copy.
Yeah, that's, that's the copy that I gave her from when we had it just like work, so...
It's an extra period in front of the...
It is in there, and a period in the A, yeah.
Um, section A, the farmers generate no more than twenty-five percent of the gross farm income. Um, and then of the remaining sixty-five percent, that doesn't make sense.
That doesn't add up to a hundred.
Because then you talk about a minimum of thirty-five percent must be produced at the farm, so that, those two sentences don't follow each other well. I'm not sure how you want to word it.
We're gonna have to check that with the MGL, because it's supposed to be a quote from the master of the law.
Yeah, well, it was, it was a draft bill that that's a quote from, so it could be a problem in the source material.
Right.
Right.
All right, so that, but we need to correct that before the next public meeting, okay?
Yeah, we need to fix it, yeah.
Agreed. Agreed.
Um, again, uh, so under the section, under these sections, um, under, we had farm, then we have farmer's market, uh, H, seasonal butchering. Um, we gave, there's an example of harvest of animals such as deer in the fall, comma, fall slaughter of meat. Don't put in the word fall slaughter of meat. Chickens might be slaughtered in July if they're doing a small private operation. So don't put in, remove the word fall slaughter of meat, animals, or where the, just say slaughter of meat animals, or where the provision of this service
Yep.
Such that the provision of this service does not exceed three consecutive months, okay? Because we don't want a slaughter house, but seasonal butchering is okay. So that, those, that needs to be cleared up, or nobody's going to pass this. Because farmers, like I said, a lot of times you get, if you're doing turkeys, it's, it's October. You're doing chickens, it might be July. They're ready in twelve weeks. And it could be a couple different ones depending on the kind of farm.
Just get too many roosters.
Yeah, there, there you go, too many roosters. Um, I also have a little bit of an issue. I'm sorry. I'm trying to make this so it's readable for the public.
Yes.
No, no, go ahead.
The planning board shall act as administrative authority for the site plan review and, and, and special permit application if required under the bylaw. Now, otherwise, for uses allowed by right, if it's a use allowed by right, why is the building department have to get involved at all? That is my question. Why? If it's by right, at less than the restriction of three hundred and fifty people. Just think about it. I'd be glad to come to another planning meeting and hash it out. Long how I can't, not if the next publicating meeting is May first.
May first, yeah.
I won't be able to, but we could communicate by mail. I want you to think about that, because if it's by right, that's it. Under three hundred and fifty. I, I'm, I'm okay with the three fifty number because that goes to something huger than an average farm might be able, or anything to handle.
Okay, but we'll, we'll come back to that, so I'm, I'm marking...
Yeah, I, you don't need an answer. I'm just saying, please look at it.
Well, I think we do need an answer tonight, but I'm just marking sections so we can then just walk down through the edits.
And then on the, the last page, section, item number five says the applicant shall be responsible for obtaining, it should be, if you're, if it's for a special permit applicant, then it should be stated a special permit applicant. Because if it's by right, and it's under three hundred and fifty, and I'm not doing it more than four times a year, I don't need a special permit. So number five should be specific to the special permit applicant.
No, number five is saying that the Board of Health has jurisdiction, other boards, and state regulations. So if, if, for example, you have three hundred and forty-nine people, you still have to have portage ons, you still have to provide potable water, you still have to provide for fire protection, you have to provide police details, and all those other things that isn't the purview of the planning board, and they shouldn't get into the muck and mire of other permitting agencies' responsibility. So it's not, it's not intended to be about the special permit. If there's another permit required, the applicant has to go to the Board of Health. The applicant has to go to the police station. That's accurate.
Oh, okay, so... So you're, any farmer, they're not necessarily an applicant unless there's other things required by the town, such as police, Board of Health, and...
Well, see, we had a discussion about the fact that, that something that annoys me when people make an application is that they come to the planning board. Let's say you're doing three hundred and fifty people. I got my permit from the planning board. I'm good to go.
Oh, no, okay.
And people aren't aware that's not the end of the road.
So, so then any, any applicant that comes to the planning board? Is that how you want to say it then?
That would work, yeah.
Okay. I just, I'm just trying to clarify it.
If, no, your, your comments are great, but we still need to go back to resolve the issue of by right and making an application to the building inspector.
Yeah.
And I think that the intent was that at least somebody's tracked, if there's three hundred and fifty people on a farm, the police department want to know, and they want to tell the person you're parking on one side of a road. Those kind of things need to be, need to be acknowledged by other entities other than the planning board.
But is the parking, the perusal of the building inspector?
It can be.
It can be?
It was normally he called. He, he is the primary enforcement officer for zoning, but if you're creating a hazard, the police department can walk right in.
Gotcha. On the application, couldn't you list those things if you need, right?
Which is what the planning board did want to do. See, you saw we had these strikeouts.
Right.
Because it does really, I, I work in many towns.
Yeah, I understand why you did those.
You know, if, if, if you think this is the end of the road, oh, no.
Yeah, so further public comment on this, and then we'll walk through the sections that are highlighted and talk about how we want to deal with those.
Yep. I don't think I have a strikeout copy. I cut the copy off the warrant. Is there a better, more, excuse?
That is the, that is the...
That is, that is the copy. That is the...
That's the, yeah.
Yeah, it just, the watermark was removed, that's all.
No, the watermark's on there. Mine's the red one from previous select board meeting.
What's the official?
The one you have.
Yeah, from the warrant.
Yeah, which is...
Yeah.
From the draft warrant.
Yep, which is what we have, but without the watermark on it.
It just doesn't say draft. I had the draft part removed from the background.
My copy isn't the same as this one, and you just handed it to me.
That's the copy that is on the website and attached to the public hearing warrant.
Okay, let's move on. As I said, Tom Robinson, Brigham Street. Um, what this discussion just brought up, and what I think you brought up earlier, Mr. Chairman, was that this, this, um, bylaw can very easily affect, well, I, I believe it flowed from the Economic Development Committee, but it has since morphed into a different form. It'll, it'll affect, um, perhaps border health, highway, police. The Concom, if someone's going to park a bunch of cars in an area that's really protected wetland, uh, for example. Um, it could affect the assessors. I believe to be a farm, you're putting income, uh, criteria on a person, on an entity that considers themselves a farm, and that has to be somehow checked. I, I imagine that's the role of the assessors. Um, in, in terms of the upside, uh, we might get an opinion from the finance committee, but those committees all should get, I, I, I'm in favor of the planning board issuing a letter. but those committees all should get, I, I'm in favor of the planning board issuing a letter to those committees saying, here is the law that we're proposing, and I'd please get your comments before the next public meeting. And that way, you, you check the boxes on other people that are gonna be impacted. I think that's much more effective and directed, as opposed to just, you know, having it in a, in a meeting agenda. Some of these will be affected more than others, but for instance, Board of Health, I imagine, would be quite heavily affected. Opening restaurants and temporary food permits, and maybe even a selectment should be included, because they're gonna have to, on some occasions, issue alcohol permits and stuff. So, this can get pretty complicated, and I think those complications need to be ironed out before the thing gets implemented or voted upon, or even strongly considered. Being more specific, it's unclear to me in, in an overarching sense, how something like this ever gets enforced. I, I don't see a clear path to enforcement prior to the issuing of, of permit to do something, or prior to even an event happening, in the event that you don't need a special permit. But how does it get enforced? Is it just gonna be a phone call to the police and say, hey, we got a bunch of cars in the, in the yard, and some of them were in my yard, it's out of control, come down and help? Wouldn't it be more effective to have a pretty good permitting process where the parking is designated and plans are submitted, even if a special permit isn't required? I think what you wanna do is lower the chaos level, you know? That will make this thing successful. So, that's one problem. Special permits, I'm back up on my feet saying, they shouldn't be perpetual, especially for things like this. Um, there's a lot of public safety concerns, parking and, and roadside operations, even if it's a regular little roadside stand. How will traffic be affected in a, in a way that's sick? So, public safety. When, when talking about permits, I think it should, would be really helpful if we clearly stated reasons for not getting a permit. That way, the person coming in and applying knows that these things are disallowed. I don't see lists of disallowed things. They appear in our regular zoning laws, but they don't appear in this law. It, in fact, it says words like any and such as, and that opens the door to just about any of them. Switching gears a little bit, two or three meetings ago, there was a party here who had difficulty understanding their way through the permitting maze, you know? Maybe a flow chart would help, but, um, her specific complaint was that she couldn't have more than one employee, non-family employee, and it isn't part of this bylaw. But while the planning board is at it, might they give that paragraph some relief in the general bylaws? I think it's section four, I can't cite the paragraph, but I think you guys know what I'm talking about. If you change that to two or three, I think that would help many of the local, uh, people who have small businesses in their homes or on their premises. And, uh, it's such a simple change, cross out one and write in two. So, that could be brought up at the same vote, because a bylaw change requires the same kind of vote as this one. So, you might make that an efficient step. That's not all I got, but enforcement is probably my, my biggest concern, I think. Some of the events in here are, um, can be interpreted as impositions on neighboring parcels of land and neighboring neighbors. And, uh, I don't know, but on a Sunday afternoon, I don't think the, the inspector's working, so you end up at the police. And that creates hard feelings, and a lot of, a little bit of preparation for an event, or a lot of preparation for an event, really lets it unfold successfully, rather than causing a conflict. My biggest point is enforcement.
Thank you for the comment. I would just, uh, there's two parts of the comment I would like to address. One being the inter-board and stakeholder feedback. It's been developed, uh, this proposal, uh, was developed jointly with the select board, with the EDC, and with a stakeholder group that was, uh, that contained people from the Board of Health, the Agricultural Commission, and then several farm owners in the community. We'll send this out again to the other boards and other stakeholders, but there's been a lot of opportunity for, uh, for them to comment, and some of them have had this as an agenda item. The other, there is also one place where, where it does say, um, there's a little bit of intentional wiggle room in the language, uh, and I would postulate that that's necessary to get by Attorney General review. It is, um, where there's a discussion about agricultural related uses. That's because there's some state rules on that, and I would suggest that if we were to, uh, on the allowable by right uses, there's, uh, there's a body of state law, uh, talking about agricultural accessory uses, and there's also been a series of pending bills, uh, about agritourism specifically. And if we were to amend that section in twenty-five point five, which is, uh, uses allowable by right here, and these allowable, non-exempt agritourism uses shall include, but are not limited to, the following. If we were to change that and make that an exclusive list, I don't believe we would clear Attorney General review on this bylaw.
I agree.
It would get rejected because of the bodies of state law that are out there on this. So, yeah, I, there's certainly some flexibility, uh, that's into that by right, but part of that is just the, the legal environment that we live in, and the somewhat, sometimes cooperative, sometimes combative relationship we have with the state Attorney General of Local Division's office. So, uh, any additional public comment before we start stepping back through this? Yep.
Hi, Whitney Faber, High Street. I just wanted to speak to Tom's comment about the amount of employees allowed, um, on, on, with an enterprise, and that's actually something that's on the EDC's agenda for next month. The possibility of asking to replace one, one figure with another based on a survey that we took a couple of years ago, and the feedback. So, that will be addressed by EDC.
Okay, uh, additional public comment? I guess that pretty much just leaves Katie. Yep, but bri- briefly, because we, we do still have several agenda items.
Me again. Allowable uses by special permit, number one is any event. Any is a pretty broad term. I think it needs some specificity, that I could say that word. For instance, uh, I know it doesn't allow motorized vehicles to be all over the place, but there's an awful lot of electric vehicles now, and, um, you could have electrical vehicle racing in your backyard, make it absurd. Maybe not too absurd, I think it will happen. I don't think that would be a great use. So, words like any and such as are, are words that just open the gate to literally any. And I think those words ought to be used very, very, or eliminated.
I. Yeah, we should discuss that and see. All right, so let's step through the highlighted, uh, highlighted sections here. So, the first one going to twenty-five, three, D. So, this language, uh, it originated from us trying to walk a little bit of a line, because ultimately what we've ended up with here is a farm accessory bylaw. And previous versions created by other towns, the problem that they had, that was gonna be hard on us, was the fact that they were all based purely on money and nothing else. That you could have an accessory use, and that the accessory use had to be smaller than whatever the primary use was, and that created issues with retiree farmers, gentleman farmers, people who do in hay, stuff where it's large land, but not high dollar. So, we had made the, the decision to try to, try to leave a little bit there, and I, uh, I think the, the commenter is correct that we do need to look at that language specifically for A. So, I think when we're looking at D, um.
Well, you definitely add up to a hundred instead of ninety, so that's the first problem.
Yeah.
I don't think it was intended to add up to a hundred.
Yeah, well, and I think.
Well, it says of the remaining, oh, I guess, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, and I just, I think that paragraph's just confusing as it is.
Yeah, I think so too.
So, that, that's, I think, more so what we need to fix there. Cause the, the second paragraph, I think, makes sense. Because that covers people who don't make the statutory definition of farming, which is, which is based on that dollar amount. So, it's our attempt to get property in when nature is farming, but it's not very profitable.
Yeah, cause that actually came up at our select board meeting, because Peter thought that it was gonna be a cap. And we're like, and I was trying to explain that it was supposed to be no caps, because if you had a hay farmer that didn't make a lot, that it would throw it all out of whack if they did something like a corn maze or something. So, and he's like, no, this is saying it's a cap, and we didn't get into an argument, and we're like, okay, we're gonna talk about this Thursday at the meeting.
And you are?
Oh, Katie Young, there you go. Craig Hill.
So, does the board?
Yeah.
Does the board or bill have any thoughts or suggestions here, cause I think we do need to fix this.
I think we gotta go back to the source and see if that's truly what it says, I think that's truly what it says.
Yeah, I think the way it reads here is, is of the remaining income that will be of the seventy-five percent that's remaining.
And sixty-five percent of that's seventy-five percent.
The sixty-five percent has to be from sale of products grown on the farm, and the remaining thirty-five percent can be produced on, at a farm at which the farm is taking place, so.
Well, they're, they're assuming that the, that the twenty-five is the number. It could be any number. Right, yeah. Could be ten. It could be ten, so.
Right.
No, what, but, it, clearly, clearly, I understand what you're saying, but what it says here is, is it must not produce any more than twenty-five percent.
The farm or the agritourism activity, that's what's not stated.
And then whatever it means. Are we?
Yeah.
The, the activity is meant to, to, to be about the activity.
Farm ag- agritourism activity.
So, I think there can be some additional wording added in here to clarify, but from a math perspective, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
You're right.
The problem here is, is that, to your point, if it's, say, for example, if, if, if it's ten percent, does that mean that the ninety percent is now subject to the sixty-five and thirty-five rule?
Yes.
We just need to make sure that we clarify it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, I think you're, it's statually accurate, but it's confusing.
But this whole thing about it, it. Yeah, it, it's confusing the way it's written, but I think, yes, it can be written.
Yeah. So, so one way to clarify it is to, by means of example. You can insert that into either a regulation or a bylaw.
Sure. And I think putting two examples, one which basically goes all the way up to twenty-five percent, the other one which is less than twenty-five percent, and then you provide an example to that, I think that would clarify it quite eloquently.
So, you don't necessarily have to have that in the bylaw, but you would put it in a regulation.
Right. Correct.
Or on an application.
Sure.
Correct.
But explaining this to town meeting could take a long time.
Yeah, that, that's.
And you would wanna slide to that point, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, I think, is one of the biggest problems here, and, and in my mind, it's ac- it's, it's this section here where.
That's the gatekeeping.
It, yeah, it's the gatekeeper, and it's also the place where I don't think we've gotten it quite right yet, and we have to get it right, and we have to get it right by the ears.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's unique, because in all the other towns that we looked into, they didn't offer both. It was like either done by money.
Yeah.
Or by the land, what percentage of the land you're gonna use, or what percentage of the, you know, income you could get. I've never seen it where we're, you know, we've got both figured into it, that's unique, and these, um, yeah.
Recognizing.
Isn't it true that, um, we're asking these people to open their books?
Yeah.
Is there a, is there a form that they can fill out that would be easy, uh?
So, we did have that to, can, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
We had that discussion, specifically, because it, the, it says in here, the burden of proof is on the applicant, and it's, we don't want the building inspector to be making a determination whether you're a farm. It's your responsibility to prove to him you're a farm.
But only if you give the applicant the cri- criteria, so that he can plot.
Well, of course, yeah.
But these, these forms would be either state form?
No, we would develop an application.
Well, I always heard, I heard earlier that these paragraphs were copied from the MGL.
Yeah.
So, the MGL must have the right language.
Oh, no, not yet.
It was a draft MGL.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, they, they, and, you know, I give you the example of the Rivers Protection Act. It went into effect when the governor jumped into the river. They didn't actually have regulations in effect for six months after that time. So, while the, the law was in effect, there were no regulation, promulgated regulations to go with it. So, the state does put the cart before the horse, frequently.
That's every law, regulations from.
Really?
So, is the.
Normally enacted until they have regulations.
Is the smart way to handle this, um, to essentially, cause we have to redo one of the notices, well, this particular section, we'll publish it as it is, and we'll also come to that meeting on the first with some alternative language to potentially plug in here to fix some of this issue.
Yeah, and, and on B, I see a problem. So, let's say I have a hundred acre farm, but a lot of it's restricted by DCR, and a lot of it's fallow swamp.
There we go.
So, now seventy-five percent of my hundred acres is seventy-five acres, but I have fifty acres of swamp as part of my farm. That's not an agricultural use. I think we need to say land in agricultural use under that.
So, yeah, let's, uh.
Improvable land, we call it that.
Let, let's publish it as it is and come to the meeting with proposals.
Okay.
Um, real quick, um, under the A, I know that paragraph that doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. An agritourism must generate no more than twenty-five percent of the gross farm income. What if you're a hay farmer and you got a bad year, and you only get ten thousand dollars worth, no, actually, four thousand dollars worth of hay sales in twenty twenty-three, and you hold an activity, maybe it's three weekends of hay rides? You could break that and violate this rule because of seasonal conditions. So, seasonal conditions are something else you need to worry about when you're talking about percentages.
Well, I, I think.
That's, that's all I'm gonna say, I don't wanna, I, it's just an example, that's all.
Yeah. All right, well, I think we pretty clearly defined the issues we need to address, and we still have another public hearing to get to after this.
Okay, yeah, no worries, I just.
So. Let's, let's move on with the highlighting. The next one is, uh, deer in the fall, fall slaughter of meat. Uh, I think it does seem reasonable to pull out that second fall there.
Yeah.
Unless anybody objects to that, that way we can at least have that clear. Twenty-five point four, um. I mean, is a good question raised by the commoner, um. I mean, as it, as it stands now with, cause we are ultimately talking about business uses here, but as we're talking about now with business uses, if something is allowable by right, the person who decides that it's allowable by right and falls within the definition is the building commissioner. So, I, this isn't really a variation from how that process is.
Other than it's requiring an application.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, look, traditionally, you know, if you're allowed, you have a lot, and it conforms to zoning. You don't come to the planning board, you go to the building commissioner, and you get a permit for a building permit to build your house. You get a permit from the Board of Health for your septic system and your well conservation, et cetera, et cetera. So, it, it is the building inspector's responsibility to be the clearinghouse for all of those activities, and I think that's the intent of this section. The building inspector needs to make sure. The building inspector needs to make sure that you're.
That you fall within that category, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So while maybe your use may be permitted by right, the activity may be subject to other regulations.
So he can guide you and be the gatekeeper.
Then doesn't it become not by rights?
Oh.
But you're allowed to build a house by right on a lot, but you still need other permits.
Yeah.
And that's the point of this section is to say that somebody needs to be able to track.
But if I'm doing something that only involves twenty-five people, I don't wanna spend time getting an application into building inspector for a twenty-five person thing.
Yeah, like say she's having a class.
What would you do today if you had an event down in your place with twenty-five people on hay rides? What would you do?
Nothing. I would do it.
What? That's right. I don't even know why we need this law.
So. So the 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 agritourism thing is is to make it legal and technically it's not legal in Hubbardston.
It's.
Other than I declare my state ag rights by right to do it.
We had.
Alright, so.
Under agritourism, this is where the umbrella needs to come in, um.
Yeah, we have, we have laws that allow a rein. We have the right to farm state law.
Other needs to be lower and upper.
But that doesn't, that doesn't cover this.
Alright, so with 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 respect to the public, I I wanna limit the conversation here, cause we still have a lot to get through tonight.
Sorry.
So from the board's perspective, how does the board feel about leaving it as it is? Do we need to look further into that? Do we need to suggest that our consultant come to us with alternatives at that public hearing, public meeting?
Yeah, at the hearing, I think leave it as is, we don't want to change anything.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
But have have ideas ready for alternatives.
Okay. Uh, five, which is the other thing that was highlighted, um, which was a recommendation from our consultant, the applicant shall be responsible for obtaining any and all other. Anybody on the board have any objections to leaving that as is? So moving on, um. So looking at the uh the special events, um. The word any did catch catch my mind, um, and where I guess it doesn't say any when you get to the um when you get to the allowable uses, so. It only gets to any when you get to the special permit, so you're talking about something that's gonna be subject to environmental impact and site plan review and something that could be denied.
I mean, it's a pretty clear threshold to me. If you have three hundred and fifty-one, three hundred and fifty people, it doesn't matter whether it's a swap meet or if it's an agriculturally based activity, and you have more than three hundred and fifty people, no matter what it is, the any doesn't, to me, seem all encompassing because it's defined. You you got more than three hundred and fifty people on a farm, you need a special permit, period.
Well, where I where I think it would have been an issue is if it was higher up on the page under the allowable by right list.
Yes.
So if it was any event there, I think it would have been a problem, but saying any event over three fifty requires a special permit is actually a restriction, which I think is reasonable.
Right.
Um, whereas if it was up above, I I do agree it would have created a bit of a loophole. And then that, that concludes the stuff that's highlighted. Does anybody on the board have anything else to add to the list? Alright, so as we mentioned, uh, what we're gonna do here is I'm gonna suggest that we continue this public hearing. We're gonna merge it with the new public hearing on May first. Uh, and we've asked our consultant to uh to come up with some ideas on the section where I think we still have some gatekeeping issues. Uh, with that said, so if we'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing to May first, at six thirty at the Slate Building.
To May first.
Alright.
Second motion.
Hearing a first and a second, uh, any discussion? Calling a vote?
Shaggy, right?
Demilia, aye.
Jack, aye.
Holmes, aye.
Well, and the chair is aye. The uh the public hearing on that is continued. So we uh we have another public hearing and then we have another important matter. Uh, how about a three minute recess, just so you can stretch your leg and refill our cups and such?
And log into the laptop and hold the meeting, cause it's about to die.
Yeah. So we'll uh we'll resume at or after eight thirty-two.
Five minutes exactly.
Yeah.
I was gonna tell you something, I actually, oh, I got it.
So we did take a look at the zoning bylaws that currently have. And we looked to see if there was a conflict between the uses in our current zoning bylaw and the uses in here. And other than real interpretive things, there are no conflicts. So there's nothing allowed here that conflicts with the if the zoning bylaws that you can do that.
Yeah, you can, it's it happens all the time.
Right. Alright.
Like special permits have been denied for like mud runs and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, so to, yeah.
Thought it was really cute the other day when our.
A nudist festival?
Uh, that you probably could not.
Yeah.
So it's.
I think it's your first one.
Uh, four twenty cannabis, um, event.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he was out there with his apples.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of.
Cause I see y'all have scattered it.
Just a few people. Did you plant anything, so yeah, so yeah, like a little bit, carrying, I said, what are you gonna plant them in? But we really thought we were called for, we said, plant flowers.
Yeah, sort of.
Just a quick, just a quick, let's move into some of that you're aware of.
Guys, I'm gonna put, yeah, fruits and vegetables, I'm gonna say, you wanted that.
Yep. So. First question about child development.
That's really nice.
So DCR would actually be sent to Tricia about it, but this is something that I'd already known about this.
How many do you have?
Five.
Five total.
Get one girl and then four boys.
So.
Okay, so I s- I saw I saw a young girl, so that must be your daughter.
No groom, no groom. But they have a significant amount of the property that's accepted by.
Mm-hmm. I think I only saw three boys, so other than was probably inside.
Yeah.
One was probably inside my oldest son playing video game.
That's what.
I'm gonna go, I like this, but I know it's going counter.
Yeah.
But it's not real.
Well, that's the, I keep saying the board helps, it's they just have to.
Um, apologize nowadays, but these minutes are gonna be like six days long.
Pedal pedal by, well, public hours.
Yeah.
And I gotta get it done before my first.
Twenty, it's twenty-five or more, full-time employees, six months of more out of the year.
Where are you heading out?
What? Oh, I'll be back, I'll be back Sunday morning.
But when are you heading out?
Oh, tomorrow, I'm leaving tomorrow morning. I I'm getting up at four thirty and the kids out the door at six thirty.
Water. Uh, public water supply requires five point six acres.
Where are you later from?
Well.
Oh, well, then from Hubbardston, Wesel Land is um in New York, so we're driving all the way to Goshen.
He's trying. Has to be ready. It has to be regularly assessed and.
I've been there, it's really cool.
Como, it is, with this time last year, um, it's just, uh, going across that Como Bridge right at the wrong time is not fun.
It's specifically said manure.
I know. Our town, well, here, the new one. No, it's not.
Ready, yep.
Yep. Alright, calling the meeting back to order, uh.
That's not the planning board's purpose.
Next on the list here is the uh battery energy storage system bylaws, just to make sure I'm getting the the language right. I'm I'm opening the um the public hearing for the proposed Article twenty-three grid scale battery energy storage systems, GESBES. Uh, just for the benefit of the public and to let everybody know where we're at, um, we had submitted this previously, and it was approved at town meeting. The attorney general's office rejected it. However, because of the way uh our bylaws were presented at town meeting, we also had an amendment to Article four that was going forward. And the attorney general's office uh penciled that change to make it so that battery energy, battery energy storage systems were allowed in all districts as a matter of right with no site plan review or anything. So this is to close that uh enormous glaring loophole that's currently in our bylaws, that I'm surprised actually hasn't been exploited yet. What this document here represents is it represents uh essentially a copy of the only one that I am aware of the attorney general's office approving in the last couple of years. Uh, and this is uh this is modeled after what Carver did, uh, along with some modifications that um that Francois had made and that I had made in order to make it fit our regulatory framework in Hubbardston. I did have an opportunity to discuss this with a member of the municipal law unit. And uh my sense from coming out of that meeting is that what we have here will most likely make it through as long as we put a cover page on it explaining why we're doing what we're doing and also discuss it at either this hearing or the next hearing that we're gonna be having on the first. Because there's a bunch of case law on this now, but it essentially says that a town cannot unreasonably restrict solar installations or battery energy storage installations. So um we need to reasonably uh restrict them. And uh and that's, well, reasonably regulate, uh, as opposed to reasonably restrict. And that's what we're attempting to do here, um. And there are there are certainly some good reasons for this. These systems are large, the technology is evolving. Currently, they can contain very significant amounts of lithium batteries, and lithium batteries are hazardous, uh, especially when they're enormous. For a variety of reasons, fires, they contain heavy metals, uh, sometimes as lead acid batteries use. There's re- there's very good reasons to have site plants here, especially given the unique characteristics to Hubbardston that we are primarily um.
Watershed community.
A water, well, we are a watershed community, and the majority of this town, whether or not is part of the official state watershed, the entire thing is drinking water watershed for either Fitchburg, um, uh, MWRA or the Wellhead Collection area for Gardner. The whole town is in one of those three. So we have pretty good reason to to want to do site plan review and to want to have some control over these in order to protect the public. And we'll be sure to express that clearly in the cover letter that goes in with the submission here. So with that said, I've had an opportunity to go through this uh bunch myself, so I don't have a lot of comments and questions about it, so I wanna open it up to the board. Um, and keeping in mind, we're gonna come back to this on the first, so I guess let's start with uh Francois, you helped take a look at this, so.
I I'm I'm satisfied with the wording because it in in spirit, it does provide many, if not all, of the uh items that we have included as part of our original bylaw. Which for all intents and purposes, I think, you know, was a, not only was it good bylaw, but it was probably going to be passing except for the fact that I think it was misread by the attorney general office for um for this year. Another comment I wanted to make here is is that the, as as you very well said. As you very well said, the uh technology is changing, as a matter of fact, it's very interesting because there's a company in Somerville, Massachusetts that has been ex- uh working very. Would you like to share? He's almost here, alright. Uh, I just wanted to comment, this is that, there's a co- there's a company in uh Somerville, Massachusetts that has led the development of large-scale batteries for specifically this purpose. And uh interestingly enough, they are now in the production phase in West Virginia, and they're um they're um the mechanism by which they're doing it is actually uh by letting uh iron balls rust, and by by virtue of being able to rust, they are actually producing electricity, and then the inverse would be to pass electricity into them and then the rust gets eliminated. Uh, it's a very interesting technology, most likely will be adopted by many of the uh companies that are actually working on putting battery energy storage systems, so uh even though uh that may be coming down the pike, it is nonetheless reasonable for us to look at lead acid, nickel, lithium, sodium, uh sodium nickel, uh in in some of the uh applications that might be still considered at the time when they may uh entertain to put something like this here in uh potentially even here in in Hubbardston, so. I think that the town of Carver did a an excellent job in terms of not only uh putting this here together, but also making sure that this got passed by the atti- attorney general office, and I have no reason to uh think that uh we should there's no reason why we should not follow their lead and example, and uh I I think there's really nothing else that I would add to this here at this time.
Uh, I did particularly like how they added protection for trail networks and historical features.
Yeah.
That was, that was a good thing that we'd missed on our original version.
I think the only question I have here, uh, Chair, is that um from an applicability perspective, some of the other bylaws that have been impacted by this here, uh, we may have to maybe quickly check them, so by the time we do our next review, uh, in the I mean, the intention here is is not to not not to accept this here today, but actually to review this here, continue this here and and have a review in a couple of weeks, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that being said, I think what I'll commit to here is just working with you and whoever else from the board who wants to participate in this here. To entertain the review of uh any bylaws that were impacted by the by the best, because we had some, we had some cross references between the various uh bylaws, right?
Yeah, well, I would suggest if anybody has any thoughts on that, um, that they should send it to Patricia, just so we can comply with open meeting law.
Exactly. Oh, that's a good point, yes. But I meant it more in the in the sense that I will review this here and bring it to 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 the attention of the board come the next time around.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Any uh any comment from the the public on this one? Alright, so let's. Alright, so let's, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the first at six thirty?
I make that motion.
Here, here the first and a second, uh, any discussion? Alright, calling a vote?
Schneider, aye.
Demilia, aye.
Dak, aye.
Holmes, aye.
And the chair is aye. Alright, thank you, so that is continued on. Alright, so the next one here is, uh, it's on the agenda as acceptance of submitted special permit for Royal Sun Farm at sixty-nine Gardner Road. So, let's talk about this one from a procedural standpoint for a little bit. So we've received an application. Um, I was really hoping that the applicant was gonna come here tonight, uh, but the applicant is not here. So, uh, I'm gonna approach this a little bit differently. Uh, I had, um, I had met with the planning board's consultant about this application. Do have the actual paper application, but we do not yet have, uh, funding in the account for the planning board's consultant on this. And the applicant has loosely suggested that, uh, he harbors some form of objection towards the fee. So how I'm gonna suggest that we approach this is, um, I'm gonna suggest that we schedule the, uh, the public hearing for this. Um, that we take no vote on the application being complete or not being complete. And that on the day of the scheduled public hearing, if, uh, if the applicant has not filed an objection to the consulting fees with the select board based upon the Massachusetts statute or has not deposited those fees with the select board, that we just reject the application without prejudice. And you can start the whole process over again, which is gonna be a problem because this permit's gonna be expired before then. So, um, I don't think there's a better way for us to handle this. Uh, Mr. Mary, I don't know if you have any other feelings or anything else you would like to add to that?
No.
One point is he still owes the main court money on top of the console and fees to, um, and also I did find out today that his certified mailings are incorrect that he gave me for the public hearing notice. So if we do schedule a public hearing notice, we will have to pay upfront for the, um, certified mailing to go out and I will have to do the certified mailing myself.
Alright, so we, uh, Mr. Mary?
So I've advised that it is not your administrator's responsibility to correct an error by the applicant. And your administrator nor the board should take any, uh, responsibility for correct or incorrect mailings if that's their responsibility under the bylaw. Uh, the only thing I can suggest is that my office do a review of the application, produce a list of what we consider to be missing and outstanding. And then the applicant has at least somewhere to go. Um, or the applicant can hire a professional to make sure his application is complete like every other applicant had, that has been, been running.
So I'm reluctant again to a situation where we spend money where the applicant has not deposited funds onto the account because I don't wanna be putting things on, uh, a town meeting warrant. In this particular situation, uh, I think the request for escrow that we've made is more than reasonable. And I would be perfectly willing to suggest that we just deny the application at the public meeting if he doesn't want to deposit funds with us. Um, I, I think we've already gone out of our way to try to make this process as easy as possible. Um, and I'm not gonna bend here anymore.
I agree, like totally agree.
So for the benefit of the board, we communicated to Royal Sun Farms right after we spoke to Paper Crane and gave them the same recommendations and guidance that we gave to Paper Crane. So there was nothing different there. We said, take your original application, handwrite, update, pay the filing fees and all that kinda thing.
May I ask a quick question to, uh, Bill here? You say you gave him exactly the same instructions, get, uh, McCarthy and in their application, this is a new application, right?
Same thing, yep.
This is a renewal.
Yep, well.
We don't have a renewal process.
The only thing that I could tell you is Alice Lipton.
It's his, it's his, he's the chief, yeah.
Yep.
He listed everything.
I, I, number one, I haven't reviewed his, his application at all.
I mean, he's basically throwing, he's throwing everything in, what is this here?
He, Alice Lipton and I spent an awful lot of hours make coercing and, and helping the application of Royal Sun Farms, um, and I think that the, the original path is being repeated.
Correct, and I mean, and again, I mean, he's throwing everything in here, it's a kitchen thing to see if it's, you know, what, what, what floats, what doesn't float here.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't reviewed it, so I don't-
And so we need to have, especially, we need to have an understanding as to what this is.
So what?
May twenty-third.
May, May twenty-third is our deadline for, for starting the public meeting.
May twenty-third is for starting the public hearing, May twenty-third, cannot go anywhere but that.
Is that, is that a regular meeting?
That is a regular meeting on the books and it can be turned into a public hearing, um.
So let's, let's schedule the meeting for, uh, for May twenty-third, if that's a regular meeting date for us and that's within the sixty-five days.
It's within the, within the sixty-five days and currently there is nothing going to be sitting on that agenda, that is right before four. That is, right before town meeting.
Okay.
Well, it has a first item.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll add it to that agenda and, uh, with the board's blessing, um, I would like for us to send a letter essentially to the effect of what we just discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, really, the applicant should be here to hear this, but I guess we'll have to send a letter.
Can we require that? Can we require the applicant to be here to vote on the special permit, or no, it's not, not, not in our bylaws?
Uh, if he's not here, we can just vote to deny it if there's no funding and he's not here and-
If everything is good, it's a good application, does he still have to be here? That's what I'm wondering, can we deny it just based on the fact that he's not here?
I don't think we can, uh.
No, but it gives you grounds to say that you have insufficient information.
Yeah.
Cause the whole pub.
He, he does not need to be, I mean, he could be there.
Mm-hmm.
He does not need to be here or he could send a, a representative instead, but-
Yeah, it, it's about the supporting testimony to answer, but, uh, and either way, uh, until our consultants, uh, funded, it's, uh, deficient. But in order to comply with the statute, we do have to schedule a hearing within sixty-five days. And if it turns out that he hasn't appropriately served notice, then we're gonna deny based upon the fact that he didn't appropriately serve notice and didn't fund, uh, our consultant or didn't file an objection to the select board as is outlined by the statute. But I'm not here to, to put, um, to put our staff into a situation where they have to negotiate, like, that's, that's what it is. Show up and follow the rules like everybody else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anybody have any other thoughts or anything to add to that?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, so that is how we will proceed.
Okay.
Good. Uh, so going back to the agenda.
Public comments.
Is there any other public comment or any other matters not reasonably anticipated by Chair? And I think that's about the end of it, that's a pretty full meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion.
So how about a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn, adjourn.
A second.
Here the first and a second, non-debatable, calling a vote.
Schneider, aye.
Melia, aye.
Dak, aye.
Holmes, aye.
And the chair is aye, we are adjourned. At, uh, eight fifty-two.